All right. Welcome, everyone. The October thirteenth, twenty twenty five Bank School District Board of Directors meeting was called to order at six thirty one. And if we could all stand for a constant. Okay, moving on to one forty three parole call. When I say your name, say Fred, Fredson.
As well.
Here. Leslie.
Fair. Fair present.
And. Present. Move on one point four public welcome. I'm the Bank School District Board of Directors. Welcome to public for our October thirteenth, twenty twenty five regular business. People appreciate the participation and education of our students and we're continue to engage them. Moving on to one point five, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the October thirteenth, twenty twenty five agenda as presented.
I was like, oh, go ahead.
Okay, all favor. One point six, high school leadership.
All right, Olivia, you are up and are it's a little bit bigger group today, but we have our Bank City Council to they can just for you. Wherever you're most comfortable, to be simple. How about right there? So you can point at the screen if there's something to point at.
It's one of which you can see. All right, so Banks High School as of October thirteenth presented by ASB. So sports volleyball is first in league and fourth in state. Girl soccer is third in league and fifteenth in state. Um, boy soccer is fourth in league and twenty eighth in state. Football is first in league and second in state. I couldn't find anything specific about cross country, so I asked some of the kids and they said that they did really good on the meet on the tent. And next week they have a big, the big foot meet where they're super excited about. They think they're gonna really do well on. And then they also have districts that we got there. All right, um, clubs and organizations. Some of them didn't have anything with anything new, so I didn't put them in who or didn't include them. So robotics, there's nothing new. Drama, the auditions happened in late September for their play clue. There is going to be put on in the middle of December. Um, the catalyst is outside of the factory room and anyone wants to see the catalyst. Um, FA, the FA showdown is tomorrow at five thirty P M. And this is the big recruitment of the year. Where they get all the new members, where they get and where they get to try out all the new events. NHS. So NHS had their first two meetings and are and are starting Thanksgiving fundraiser. This next couple of weeks, um, they're gonna partner with the middle school elementary school. Where they're gonna have, um, it's gonna be middle school versus high school versus elementary school. And then the school that wins, they get like ten minutes of free time, something like that. It'll help us because we can't give like a big gift to the whole school. Um, and then FAD, FAD will be at the open house for the old high school filming the documentary they were doing. All right, Coco. There's a lot of slides about Coco. Um, so homecoming went off with without a history year. The Coco court was crowned on Monday, October sixth, and the famous timeline football game on Friday, October tenth. Banks won the game forty two to seven against Kennedy. And congratulations to twenty twenty five Coco Queen Adelye Wilson. She's in the red. Coco part two. So this year, the class is twenty six, has won Coco for the third year in a row. Congratulations. And the rankings are listed below. Um, so seniors got first, the freshmen got second. It was a really close call. Freshman almost won homecoming, which was very stressful. They made a lot of paper crowns and they just gave them out. So that was fun. Um, then juniors got third and the sophomores got fourth. All right, part three, spirit days. Monday was such a class. Tuesday was happy tours Tuesday. Wednesday was murder day. Thursday was theme day where the freshmen were medieval, AKA the crowns. Sophomores were prehistoric, juniors were futuristic, and seniors were roaring twenties. And staff, they lived their best lives during the eighties. That was a very fun day. And then Friday was blue and gold. They were supported their bank community. And then here's some photos to make you guys happy. That are like to show what was happening. So this is when the seniors were making their banner. Um, this is one of the last competitions, human bowling. We have tacky tours Tuesday. That's one of the crowns from the freshmen. Um, then tacky tours, tacky tours. Yeah, that all goes together for that. And then upcoming events, financial eight night is this, uh, another one. Yeah, this Wednesday, October fifteenth at six thirty P M. The P S E T is sometime over this month. I can't get the big date yet because I didn't have my planner on me. And it is voluntary to all juniors. And then we were also given a lot of new volunteer opportunities this year. So a lot of VHS students will be coming back to the community this year. And then, uh, if you have any questions or anything you want me to cover next time, I am more than willing to be here in anything new. But that is it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, I'm moving on to recognition.
Yeah, thanks. I'm gonna be brief on recognitions. Um. Every, every month that we start aborting, we try to recognize someone, something, some in our, in our community or in our schools for doing well and, um. Rather than having all fifty staff members from the elementary school come to this meeting, we're actually gonna recognize them in person on Wednesday morning. I believe Director Six is gonna be able to join me, but, um, they just have shown tremendous growth in their reading and math scores. For their students over the past couple of years, um, one in growth, um, in math in particular. The state, I guess, gives you a rating for your, for your scores on a one to five scale. And five being the highest. For every, for all students and for every subgroup of students in their math growth, they receive a level five. Um, for literacy growth, they weren't all fives, but four then fives. And part of that is because they've been growing for a while now and there's less room to grow in, in literacy than in math. And, and just along lines, I know not everyone's here for this, but Dan was talking a little bit about like, yeah, growth is great. I'm gonna paraphrase, but we also need to have some achievement. Like growth is great, but you gotta get to where you wanna get to as well. Um, every year for the past three years, um. The literacy scores for all students have increased for the elementary school. So, um. We'll talk in my report a little bit about some of where those scores come from and that, but just appreciate what the elementary school, what their leadership team is doing, what their staff is doing. Most importantly, what the students are doing in the experiment. So Leslie and I are gonna bring from Donuts and thank them for their time on, uh, on Wednesday morning. I don't believe we have audience comments. Were there any comment cards filled out? Don't believe so. Nope.
Yeah. Uh, ask, uh, audience comments. We're going on to presentations and, um.
I'll go ahead and kick us off. So, um. This is an unique idea that we were trying to throw together for a while now. And so for our, our guests, members of the city council and our mayor. And our city manager, thank you for joining us. Um. The idea of this is that I, I don't wanna, not to discount any other groups in the, in the city or community of banks, but like. I do believe that these groups, the big school board and the big city council, um, are the leadership, the most influential leadership for this community. And we're going through a ton of changes, right? We have some lots of construction going on. We're modernizing our schools. Um, we live in a, in a very interesting time. And so, um. A few people have asked, like, what's the outcome of this? And some of it, I don't know. I hope that the school board, the city council, that, that the mayor, the city manager, the superintendent and the staff, I hope we can just further build relationships. Um, hopefully we'll be working together to make this community even better and better. And then build off of the positives in this community for, for years to come. So the way it's going to work tonight. Is I'm going to, um, as brief as I can, but I'm pretty long winded, but I'll try to be, give some brief comments. Um, Joel Lynn's gonna give some brief comments. So similar like a superintendent's report and a city manager's report. Everyone is gonna open it up for dialogue. Um, I was kinda guessing that there might be questions about the bond work and construction. If that comes up, then it's open point for y'all. Um, our architect is here from Brick. He can, he can join in and we have staff and team here, but, uh, just welcome. Thank you for being here and, uh, I'm gonna pass these out. And then. We all know each other. Is there, is there any for introductions, you think? Don't you think we're okay?
We're okay.
You're going with those changing your team and. We want to do well. And then for, for school board member, that this is all in board though.
It's an important campus.
Um, what, what you have in front of you, the map, that is our adopted twenty year master plan for the campus. So. I always give the same kind of caveat. That is not all of the work that we will be doing with this fall. Um. What the board directed staff to do. In the beginning of the process was to come up with a plan that would be responsive to this community for, again, about twenty years, right? And so that's what you see there. And then the report, then the front page of the report that you have has kind of the blue graphic. The, the board adopted a strategic plan three years ago after engaging with the community for about a six month process. The only thing I'll point out is that, um, we have five priority areas of our strategic plan. Empowering our students, enriching our facilities, energizing our team, engaging our community and aligning our resources. And we consider that strategic plan to be our promise to the community. So that's what we ask. The community keep us accountable for. That's what we try to keep ourselves accountable to and what I ask the board to keep me accountable to. So I'm just gonna share a couple of talking points. I'm not gonna read my report to you. But I just wanted to share a few things I think are relevant for both the school board, the city council and concerned citizens to think about. I, I, as you can tell, struggled, um, what's the point of tonight? And I think the point of tonight is to, for me, it was selfishly, is to support what I think is the most important resource we have in our community, and that's our kids. I have like a, a dream and a vision of our kids going off and doing great things after high school, but then coming back. And being the next mayor, being the next city councillor, being the next city manager. And, and I believe our kids have the capacity, the ability and certainly the pride to do so. So I hope we can do some of that tonight and think forward to that tonight. When we think about this strategic plan, um. I just wanna share a, a little bit more about this, this growth that we're having. Um. Our kids are doing a phenomenal job focusing on all aspects of school. Years from Olivia, thinking about how, how engaged our kids are in high school for homecoming. And if you walk through our hallways every day, you'll see kids deeply engaged in their academic learning. And then like right now, some of you were joking, you can't find a place to park because they're still here after school. And, and Ron and I were talking before, right? This is about a, not quite, but it's about a three hundred and sixty five day a year campus. Not quite. We take a few days off, but there are people here almost, almost always, and, and I think that's wonderful. I do wanna share a challenge and, um, Ron, Leslie and I met, um, with legislators or, well, we got a legislative update from our board governing body. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the state budget and I'm, I'm not gonna dwell on it, but I, I do think it's important. And I think it's important for a couple of reasons, and I wanna frame this for both the city council and the board. The state of Oregon is going to go through some financial challenges and I'm not sure how significant they're going to be. But one of the reasons I wanna share it with the city council is we learned from the work done by your economic development council. That the bank school district is by far the largest employer in the city of banks. And I imagine if you even include the, the wider district. We are only able to employ, but and we, we probably employ is a little, the reason I can't give you an exact number is because we had some contractors. Who are probably responsible for somewhere between a hundred fifty and two hundred jobs. Not all those people, not all those people live in banks, but they are an economic driver of, of the community, of course. And, um, I just wanna share kind of three reasons why we're, we're pretty concerned about the budget going forward. And that will have impact on what, what kind of revenue actually that we have. Um. The, the state of Oregon is looking at a current, we're, we're funded in a biennium, right? I, I believe everyone will be familiar with that, but our budget comes in two year cycles. And we should be in the first year of a two year cycle, which usually once we get into that, we're like, oh, okay, you know, we kinda know what we're gonna get for two years. It's not super unique, but this is one of those biennia where we are, um. We are in a deficit this year. The, the state is in a, in a current deficit and they're projecting a deficit for the next two to three biennium. And I'm just gonna share the three reasons for that and the things that we're trying to think about. Um, we will have less income tax revenues in, as a state. The state's down about twenty five thousand jobs over the past year, but it's actually about the past eight months. Um, we'll also have less income tax revenue because of the way our tax system is aligned to the federal tax system. Um, we're one of five states that when federal income tax deductions change. The state income tax follows that directly. It doesn't have to stay like that forever. That can be a decision. The legislature changes, but it is the current place we have now. And the federal tax bill created a number of tax deductions, particularly for, um, high income earners, which. May be able to produce a, a significant amount of Oregon state tax revenue. So be- because of that coupling and because of the loss of jobs, our income tax, um, revenue is, is less than projected. Um, that's significant. About eighty percent of the general fund that gets distributed out to schools comes from income tax. So we're a little bit worried about that. We have to think about that. And then this one's even, probably even trickier for us to think about because the other significant challenge with. Funding right now comes from reductions to SNAP benefits or food assistance programs and reductions to Medicaid. And like, we, we might think like, okay, well, that's not a reduction to schools. And it's not. In that case, it's really not like those. We don't get a ton of direct funding from, um, food assistance or from Medicaid. But, but what has happened over and, and what we imagine may continue to happen is as our, like, health and human services. Food services, um, medical services have greater needs. Their percentage of the state budget increases at, at a proportion directly to the amount that the education budget decreases. Um, and that's absolutely not a judgment call. Those services are extremely important. It's just kind of factual that eight to ten months ago, we, we, we thought there was gonna be more money to, to kind of distribute out than there's going to be. And so we are looking at how that may influence us. And, and you might wonder like, why, why am I bringing this up? At a city council, school board meeting and, um. What I hope we can all think about, um, is one, some advocacy when we work with our state leaders and think about how. How we can help advocate for the needs of our communities, the needs of our students and for the needs of the citizens of. You know, I guess the city of banks, but I know just because the city border goes up, you know, I mean, you still think about everyone outside as well. So everyone within this kind of greater bank's community. But also like, what kind of wraparound supports do our students and family need? As more students come to school hungry and more families are worried about, you know, food security. There's more families are worried about healthcare. We're, we're still trying to educate and work with families. You're still trying to serve the families and. Like, how can we work together to build that gap that appears to become? And I don't hear the sound alarm bells. The state has a lot of reserves. The state can take some action about those tax things. But the current reality is that's where we're at. And I hope as leaders, we can kind of start to think forward on how some of those things will happen. And I just wanna end with some more goodness. You don't need to put that down or in there in the middle. Um. We are so thankful to the community of the bank school district for authorizing our bond, for voting our bond in. And even though we haven't dug a ton of holes in the ground, we've actually done some tremendous work. One's the master plan. That'll guide this campus for the next twenty years and help the future leaders of this campus make decisions that'll respond to the community. One, as you walked in, you might not have even noticed, but we've greatly increased the security of both the middle school and the high school. It is now, um, no longer a possibility for someone to walk in and just access our students. They actually have to, um, one, they have to be buzzed into our schools during very normal hours. And, um, check in with someone in the office before they would be allowed to, to go out into the community. Unfortunately, we have a lot of research on school shootings and we know that a locked door is the greatest preventer that we know right now. Of how to, um, limit the impacts of, of someone trying to, trying to harm our kids. Um. We are finalizing our plans, getting our permits going. Um. A lot of you probably know, um, some, some members of our bond accountability team and they're wondering why this stuff takes so long and sometimes I do too, but. Um, everyone's making sure that we're, we're dogging all our eyes and crossing our t's. But, um, we are finalizing plans to, um, replace outdated buildings, complete deferred maintenance. Um. Some might include HVAC that's already been completed in our high school. Um, past three years that I've been here, we've had to tell our community that there's no heat in the gym during basketball season. That will no longer be the case. That HVAC has already been replaced and is compatible with the new systems that'll be going through. Um, working on traffic flow, working on our potential for future growth. Um. And then the last one, you can't quite set your calendars yet, but you'll all be invited. We're thinking around March. Will be an appropriate time to do a groundbreaking ceremony. Um, we'll be doing stuff before that. But it's kind of like we're gonna be digging a hole and then there'll be like the, the pad there for a month or two. And so we think around March is when people will start to see what kind of looks more like progress. And so we, we've kind of earmarked that date for a, a, a groundbreaking ceremony. We'd really draw up some, so, um. Well, remember, city council, Mayor Kirk, um, that, that's what I have for you. Uh, maybe we'll do anything I said. If you have any clarifying questions. Then we'll kick it over to Joel Lynn and then we can just have a discussion. So is there anything I said that you're like, heck, was that guy talking about? Anything you need clarified? Yes, man.
I have a couple of questions. Does the kids right now, everyone gets free lunch?
They do.
Is that something that is stable or is that something that's gonna be affected by how it, the funding stream has gone through?
Um, it's not stable. It would be subjected to the plans in the federal government. Um. The good news, I don't, I don't think anyone has come out yet and said that program is going away. Um, but that is subjected to changes in the federal country. That's all federal.
And then I seen this lovely like bike or not bike, the bus kind of detour that started by post office and goes through. Is there any kind of like, hey, we think we're gonna do this in this timeframe?
So, no. That's for the twenty year master plan. Cause that would have to come with like the next bond.
Okay.
Um, the, the entrance of the buses after this bond will still be trellis. But they will no longer mix with the cars in the middle and high school parking lot. Which will, which that's a significant contributor to the traffic problem. That's what creates the bomb.
I'm thinking of all those people who queue up right now to pick up their children, but.
In, in the elementary school or?
Yeah, for the elementary.
Oh, they'll still be there. Yeah, that won't, that won't change until the next bond.
Okay.
So does that mean the parking lot on the middle school side here is going to be built first where the buses are?
Oh, but like on the, like it'll be the south side of the Ox Gym.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that whole thing is happening.
That whole thing is happening.
Pete, I believe that's part of our whole trying to figure out the, the traffic flow on our campus. For physicians, right? We all, we've all seen Main Street be backed up during school hours.
Yes.
It's not like a portal.
No.
And there'll be this, also that, that that map doesn't show. We're widening the space. You know how cars basically take a U for when they come into the middle school and they kind of do almost a giant U-turn and go out? Um, there'll be more room for like, like two lanes to go five. Where right now you can maybe add two lanes when you start, but then it's certainly bottlenecked down into one. The map you're seeing does not show that, but in our like plans that we're submitting for permitting, it, it shows that much better. And more clear like where drop off is and, you know, better signage and better locations for dropping. All right, Joel Lynn, do you wanna chat with whatever you wanna chat with us about? And then we'll open it up to dialogue.
Well, hopefully it'll be quick.
I know I tried.
So this is to answer your one question because I've gotten several questions regarding how planning the, um, the timeline works for planning.
Perfect.
So I thought I would give the board a quick overview and counsel. So there's four different types. There's a type one, type two, type three and type four, but I'm not gonna go to type four. Because that doesn't relate to any of the land use applications. A type one is like a mechanical permit. A sign permit of building permit for like a house. And that's a, um, thirty day review. Once the application is received and deemed complete. And so within thirty days or less, then we get that review back. And that's what's used to take into the accounting for a building permit. The types that you guys are doing right now are types two and types three. The gym, the gym is a type three. So basically that is. What happens there is usually a pre-apps done and then we wait for an application to come in from the applicant. At that point, when that applicant or when that application comes into the city, the city has thirty days to review it to deem it incomplete or complete. Once it's deemed complete, then we send a letter out to the applicant saying, yes, your application is received. Everything's good here. And then we, um, start the process of going through our different consultants from our engineer to. Um, different organizations like O D O, could be the fire department off getting their comments. So that we can create a staff report for doing the approval. If it's a type two, basically it's all done by the staff and they just have to, we just need to make sure that it meets all the criteria. And then it does require a note or some type of mailing to go out to the system. Once we, and we can usually give them like thirty days to respond. Do you agree or not agree? Most of the comments we've had, one you guys did. I think it's when you guys did a, you had it subdivided your property into three different. We got calls that came in. They weren't complaining about it. They just wanted to know why they got the letter. Because it had to go within the two hundreds, um, the, the school district. So once we, that commentary is complete, then we send out a notice of, uh, decision. And then we show how it met all the criterias of our land use, um, code. And then that then get a letter and you get to go proceed to the next step. The two that are coming up above right now are the gym. And we are doing, looking for a November seventeenth planning commission because the type three has to go through a planning commission. They have to review it and approve it. And so basically what happens there is you, application comes in, deemed complete or incomplete. This one was deemed incomplete because they have two different versions of what you guys wanted to do. It was easier just to go for the, the, the bigger product. Or, you know, what you want, you know, with adding whatever you wanted to do with it.
The teamwork.
The teamwork, yeah. So basically then, um, they came back with those adjustments. We deemed it complete. Now we have hundred and twenty days. We have to get a decision to applicant within that day timeframe. So we now have a steam complete in September and we have hundred and twenty days to get it completed. And so we're looking at, um, right now is a November seventeenth date to approve the gym. So, and then the last one is the one that we just did a pre-op meeting. So we're just waiting for the application to come in and go through it. And then again, that's gonna be a type three, goes through the planning commission for their approval. So hopefully it gives you, we have a big timeline. It can take a hundred and fifty days from the time that the city receives an application to get it approved.
Thank you.
So hopefully that kind of clarifies the timelines of what happens with planning exercises. But that question's come up several times. I thought that would be a good one to bring. And if anybody's interested, I can foreview the code section if you wanted to review it too. Just let me know.
Thank you.
Um, one of the other things is projects. The city's not just working on, on school district. We have two other developments happening. And so in conjunction with the projects for the, um, the east side and the west side. So basically with east side, I thought I'd just give an overview and this is something I could send to you on a monthly basis, but you wanna share it with the board on a monthly base. But basically at this point, we're doing arts road and banks road intersection's been done. It's almost finished. They still have a couple of things to do. We are looking at the subdivision for flat phase one A. Making sure that everything, the plans meet our standards and everybody's weighed in on all the questions or concerns. And then once that's deemed complete, then they, um, they'll start, well, they have already started doing the road infrastructure project. Roundabout for arts road and banks, arts road and highway six will start in Oc, will start in in October, but it's probably not gonna be completed until then, May of twenty twenty seven.
Oh, wow.
And then we have a reservoir that could be built up on where our other tanks are. That will be started next spring. And I'm still looking at maybe completing that in twenty twenty seven. And this is to be determined. They don't know yet. And then um, then the actual building permits for issuing, which will affect you guys, because you start receiving some funds from that, from your construction access tax. They're looking at putting applications, starting applications in June of next year. And we're looking at twenty six. So we're looking about, they said that they're between the west side and east side. We're looking at about sixteen to twenty applications a month.
Oh wow.
So.
For your homes.
For the new homes. So that's what they're estimating. So if your finance person wants to talk to me, I can kind of, then you can kind of add it to your next year's budget.
The ex- the excess tax is about, I think a dollar sixty per square foot.
Yeah, it's gonna be about. It's about two thousand to three thousand based on the square foot each of the home, so. Per home, so that will add more.
Very helpful to the, for the suggestion.
Yeah. Um, and then they.
And Joel, I'm sorry, Joel, that, you think, you said, did that come in with a building permit issued?
No, we have, they have to, the uh applicant has to pay for it ahead before they can submit for a building. Because um Washington, because all their billing permits go through Washington County. And the county will not issue the building permit until they paid all the fees.
Nice. Thank you.
So, but there's some good news for funding.
That's great news.
Yeah.
I have a question to clarify. So that comes from the um, that tax is assessed to the builder, like construction company, not the individual buying the home.
Right. So basically, when an individual buys a home, all these fees are attached to the cost. So they're, you know, that's how I view it, is that the cost of that home includes all these fees. And it's just not the con- um construction excess tax that includes all our um. S G C, S D C phase, um and also the county's um transportation development tax. That we have to cha- um pay, that we have to charge for too. Some of those will be waived because some of the stuff, some of the work that's being done is over. Yeah, is being over, it's not, basically, what I'm trying to say over, is they're doing more than what they need to do. And so they're, they could ask for credits for those, some of the infrastructure projects that they're doing. So those are things, are new things that the city's gonna have to track this time around compared to some of the other um developments and apps. And so what we're doing is setting up the process and procedures right now. Thank you. So, um, and then the um west side is they're looking at, we're looking at phase one of their development. And then there you will start estimating applications next June too. So they're both on top on the same schedule of events. So like I said, I could send this to you when I review.
That'd be great. Yeah, that'd be great. I'll, I'll just include it on monthly report.
Um, funding wise, your kind, the city's kind of been the same boat. Because our, we only receive like three and a half percent increase. And the cost of all our expenses are probably anywhere from ten to fifteen. So we're, our general fund is kind of being depleted a little bit. Not a little bit, a lot. So it's been, the last couple of years, it's been um very challenging on trying to budget, live city's budget. But with the new developments, once those houses. From our side, we're gonna see differently run with the school district, because you guys get so much for each student. When the city starts seeing an increase in assessed value, then we should see an increase in our um. General fund or our pro- uh permanent rate property tax that we received. Um, is there anything else? I think that's my quick overview then.
It's good, Joel. Any questions, thoughts?
So, uh Joel Lynn, you, you mentioned that our projects were tier two and tier three, but I only heard you say two tier threes. Do we have other like things that would be considered a tier two?
You've had some projects in the past when you guys did the lot line adjustment.
Oh, okay.
Um.
So those don't involve probably new structures or?
Mm mm.
Okay.
No.
And the portals.
And the portals, yeah.
Yeah.
And, I mean, the bathroom.
The bathrooms is coming up. I know that they're supposed to be getting an application with the bathrooms. So, trying to keep all these projects, it's like, I only look at the programs that I have a applicable file for right now, so. But those would be more of a type two or ti- yeah, type two project where it's more staff related, so they're me. But I think the bathrooms are gonna do a type one, just a general review by the staff. Because we've already approved the portals and stuff and it's in the same category. So that one will be a little bit faster turnaround.
Cool. If the district were want, wanting to take some action on a potential uh. Uh rear access to the campus based on the property that we own to Wilkes. Where does the city come into that process or?
It's gonna be looking at the traffic, probably looking at the number of um cars going out behind that. Just to make sure that it's going to, you know, that it's not gonna burden that whole, you know, Wilkes Street project. I think that's being looked at in this review, the last pre-op meeting we had regarding. The high school is looking at the traffic impacts from. The um that property on Wilkes um Street.
It'll be in our app, it's in our application.
So I hopefully that kind of gives an idea of why it's not a fast turnaround. It just, it does take time and then the staff has certain amount of time to get a report to make that we present. And then how we meet all the criterias from what you guys submitted to our planning group or to the city. If anybody else has any questions?
Well, there's one more topic we wanted to talk about. I don't know, anything? And I, I don't know that I do a very good job of describing this. I've, I've tried, but could. Joel Lynn or anyone on your team, talk about the, I think it's the urban renewal district. I, I don't, did I say that correctly?
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think the board would love an update or description or anything yet on that. You want to add something?
Oh, me? Um, sure. Um. We've had the urban renewal district in Bay City, it's twenty seventeen when we established it. And um it's based on property taxes. Don't we need to give you the full?
I think, how about the elevator speech on what it is and then how it might impact the district?
Yeah, it's essentially, it can be up to twenty-five percent of your city. And we have recently, we're re- we're redoing our district, so it is actually a full twenty-five percent. And those properties that are inside the district. Must be contiguous, so they all gotta touch each other. And those, th- those properties get their property tax rate frozen at the time the district is formed. And any as, uh increase in assessed value of those properties. Goes to the urban renewal district. That's how the urban renewal district gets their funding.
Mm hmm.
And when you set up a district, you set up. A project list with, associated to the district where you're going to spend those funds. And uh we did that in twenty seventeen and we just went through the whole process again. Which we're going to, it's gonna be in front of us tomorrow. We're gonna approve the, the redone district. And uh there's, uh it has to go to planning commission and some other things, but we're, we're getting closer to. Getting it updated. And uh we put some new projects in there and expanded the district a little bit. And this is one of the really most powerful ways in the state of Oregon. That you can carve out money for economic development and infrastructure improvement in your, in your community. And that's what a lot of the projects, I don't have a list in front of me. Um, are related to those types of things, so. Is that, is that all?
On the adjusted district, does it impact the school district at all?
Okay, so yes, we added a couple of properties and part of your campus is now an urban renewal district. One is Kelly Field. And second one is the spot on your. Master plan that is performing a.
I think you just said, I think you said speed or.
Yeah, white and yellow is our for me, but.
I can't make a.
Yeah, so that, that and Kelly Field are in our urban renewal district and there's a strip of land that runs. Out to Main Street to get it contiguous, so.
So my understanding then that you guys have the money to just build our performing arts center, I don't know how that works.
And we, we want to take full prep first.
How, there's, can you imagine some expectations around, just to give us on the map, what does that maybe need?
Well, the problem we're having is that. Our twenty seventeen plan was based a lot on the west side development. Because all of that land in the west side development is in the urban renewal district. You can imagine the value of that raw land now is very low. But you put a hundred and forty homes on it, it becomes very high. And so that increase in assessed value for those properties would end up going to the urban renewal district. Well, in twenty seventeen, we're forecasting, we were a couple of years out. Well, here we are in twenty twenty-five, eight years later, haven't built any housing yet. So consequently, the revenues to our urban renewal district have been slowed way down. And the first five from, from this point on, for the next five years. It's not gonna be a lot of money to throw around at big projects. And uh it's not gonna be much at all, to be honest. Um, so.
And, and then the other part of that is that Hampton being closed down.
Well.
Reduced our overall income from the U R A by maybe.
Hampton closed down and removed the buildings, then got their assessed value changed at Washington County.
And they found.
Oh, way down.
Oh, yeah, we lost, we saw a reduction.
And, and that property isn't, so. When, when that gets sold and there's new buildings built, that will work.
Yeah, but there was a reduction of about thirty thousand dollars from what we were, were, what funds we were receiving to what we received last year. So anything back there, so. But school wise, I don't think it's gonna affect your funding, because if you get a certain, you get a certain dollar amount all the time, based on your school, you know, the number of students you have.
Yeah.
But you're not gonna see reduction. It's gonna be more like.
This are, so property taxes for schools, um, I was, it's, it's all, it's like a teeter totter. Yeah, measure five, which was in the eighties, basically, even if our property taxes went way up and we had way more revenue from property taxes. Because some of the technical dollars do flow in that way, well, we just get less from the state. So it works like that. We always know based on our enrollment what our target is. And that's just a combination of what they call local sources and then state sources, but it always equals that number. So like, uh Ms. Collins, we are giving a little more in property taxes than we had originally thought. Which normally you'd be like, oh, that's good news from a revenue standpoint. There's really no news. In fact, we actually have to tell them that, so they send us less money. So we don't have to send it back to them. So property taxes aren't decided for us.
It is for us.
Yes, very much. Well, what other question? Are there any burning topics or am any of y'all with each other or Joel Lynn or I?
I, I got one, 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 one's the auxiliary gym gonna get built.
Gosh, no kidding, um.
I was curious.
So our timeline is opening winter of twenty twenty-six. Our planning commission is November seventeenth. Um, I, on Thursday, and this is where my vocabulary is not where it should be. On Thursday, our um grading permit from the county, we were on paper finally. And they had some very minor changes to still make, so it is like not issued, but right then. So that's why I was talking to, about the um groundbreaking. They should be able to start grading for that soon, right? But then since the prefab building. That has to come in and it's gonna take a while for it to seem like a lot of progress. So I think it'll start seeming more like progress in our March.
But they're gonna scrape some dirt around.
They'll start scraping some dirt around when that grading permit come, is, is in. So we're, we're, and that's a tricky one, right? Because the community will be down in gym. For essentially fall of next year. Unless, I mean, who knows, maybe we'll beat some construction timelines, but, but the bar no longer has heat. And so, and it'll be gone by the next fall. It won't exist longer, so the community will be down in gym. So we're trying to help our, eh, from a school perspective, it won't influence us too much. We're trying to work their youth force. To help them look at some of the surrounding, some like, some church gyms and stuff like that too. For that fall season.
Um, I guess the line that you guys are drawing on the footpath, is that following tax laws or is that just an arbitrary line?
It doesn't follow tax laws.
Okay.
Falls exactly the footprint of Kelly Field and the footprint of the projected performing arts center.
And I can send you the recording if you'd like to see that too.
Yeah, I was, I was curious. I just remind everyone on, on project that we have on the campus, uh the state doesn't really give us much money to maintain our buildings. And um, so. As we go forward on, on everything, you know, all of a sudden we get more, more structure than we need. I'm not saying that we don't need them. But we won't have um money to necessarily repair them. So just be mindful of what we're building until we can repair them or we're trying, with more, more buildings we have, that's more uh more maintenance that we have to do.
Which doesn't that mean you have to plan for bonds in the future to pay for maintenance, doesn't it?
Yeah, and hope, and hopefully that we pay for them, right? We get a path, right?
I think the performing arts center is just a partnership where we, if we adopt, approve that project, where we could be like. Wouldn't be for, it'd be a smaller amount where we could, you know, we would contribute to that building.
Yeah, no, it, it goes to, can we pass bonds in the future, right?
Anything from council members, if they were board members, you know, wanted to keep talking and.
Well, I know Brian came to me with the idea, so I. Gave it to Joel Lynn, coordinated. And I'm, I'm hoping that having this open conversation. That we can, you know, run things past each other and maybe we just work a little easier. Right? If you guys kind of know where we're coming from, we know where your guys are coming from, we can brainstorm. You know, see if there's other things that we can work on together. You know, just, just start getting the conversation going. So the next time that we do this, I think you were thinking maybe quarterly?
We'll see, roughly, yeah, twice a year or something like that.
You know, if, if something comes up before, we can contact each other, otherwise we can. Talk about it in a couple of months.
The next, I'll, I'll just end my thought with this. The next big thing is thinking. Trying to get our school districts selfish in our school district, trying to get us think, thinking less about school has to happen on campus. More about how school can happen out in the community. And with, especially with our high school students, thinking about how we can engage our businesses here and helping us with like, us helping them with workforce development. And then helping us with what do those opportunities look like. I have some ideas and thoughts, topics I've come up with, about, thoughts Chamber of Commerce about, but. That's like, I think a partnership of these two groups can work together well.
Seems like one of the discussions that's gonna happen not too distant future is um. Where the city's gonna be as relative to the district on the fields that the developer on the east side is gonna build. Uh, I know that's way up in the air and I don't know the time, I don't know the timeline on that is, but that's obviously gonna be something we're gonna have to work together on pretty closely. Uh, to figure out how we're, how that's gonna work out.
That is one of my things, or that is on my plate for next year, start somewhere after the first of the year, after I get through. Processes, procedures, new procedures that we have to develop for the other stuff that we're doing. Is to start having that conversation because, getting it set because. We're looking at twenty twenty-seven when they have that park built.
Yeah, last I heard, it was opening fall of twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Though I haven't talked to them in a while.
Yeah.
At least the first thing during.
First phase, but that I think first phase.
For field?
Field, which is where that's the one we need to have that uh, we need to have that conversation with the school district. So it is on my to-do list, um.
Or one of the things that might come up before that, and probably is not a huge issue, but that overpass that is gonna be built. It's gonna be so tall, it's gonna impact the way it accesses the campus. And you've probably had so many of those discussions, but it's not just like a little overpass that has a. There's, it's gonna be a twenty-five foot uh drop that's gonna have to be accommodated for them. But it's just a minor example of something that we're gonna actually figure out together.
And it's sort of unfortunate for the timing, because we don't know for sure the rail line is gonna be needed, because we don't know who's gonna purchase Hampton.
Right.
Therefore, we're gonna have the, them a. Outlandish amount to actually build it. For an active rail line.
Would it may not.
When all we have is parking.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, it seems like we're, we're headed into a traffic tsunami, actually, um.
Good word.
I'm, I'm really struggling with this, putting the, you know, seven hundred and fifty homes on the east side or whatever the number is, I don't really know.
Nine hundred and fifty five, sorry. Nine hundred and fifty five.
So.
Eight phases in five to ten years, so.
I mean, there's only, there's only two ways into the district at that point. It seems like. Our traffic problems are, are probably going to get a little worse, I would imagine, um. It, how do we approach this with the rail line? I mean, is there a possible breakpoint where we can? I don't know, at least put a crossing um and bring that in either in the Wilkes area or somewhere.
That's one thing we're trying to work on. The problem is, is we have to kind of wait to see who is Hampton. Our plan is, is to push Sunset Boulevard through. But that's up in the air with whoever purchases the property plus actually getting an easement from the railroad. If they decide they're going to stay here. Right now, we have so many different variables up in the air.
Yeah.
It drives us nuts.
Yeah.
That's something we've been working on for a long time.
No, no, I know, I know.
Lots of dialogue with every other companies in the state and so forth and.
But every day in the morning, I drive by what used to be the golf course and it's real now. And I know we never really fix things until they're broken, but like, um, this could get broken in a big way.
Well, the point is that they really not want it to work with us to this point.
I understand.
And they don't, they don't really have to, because they're, they're like foreign country. Um, it's very, very tough to deal with, but the mayor is right. The fact that Hampton left has kind of opened up a, a door. For negotiating with the railroad based on what industries end up at the mill site. So if, if there is no need for rail, that will be very helpful to what we want to accomplish going forward.
And that is one of our projects is once we know what's going to happen with Hampton is a project to figure out how to convert the rails. To trails. Um, so that is, so basically, and then that will create the access on Sunset to go from Sunset all the way to Arco. So there's plans, there's a project that's approved by us that's on our list, so. It's just knowing, like, like Mayor said, it's annoying what Hampton's, you know, who they sell to.
And that's, that is unfortunately the tiny part is because I know that Holt on the west side. Uh, I believe it's in either first or second phase, they want to build that overpass, so.
The only bottom line right now we have is that we have another six months to figure out what's happening with Hampton's property.
Right.
And that can kind of help that situation with that bridge, but.
But we don't know how their brokers do.
But Holt's got a definite drop, drop dead date for building that footbridge.
They get the plans from, to get the plans completed, they have until, I think it's April or May of next year. So we can fuck if something happens, changes within the next six months.
So that'd be three to five million we could put on something else.
I would bet we're going to have a footbridge.
It's unfortunate.
Well, thank you, the members of the council, the mayor, the Phillyn City Manager, thank you for being here. Um, hopefully this is the first step in, as the mayor said, building some relationships, working on things together, um. I'll take, you know, now, you know, we'll, we'll get the feedback from you all on what, how you would want to see. Meetings like this go forward, um, I'm glad we took a shot of a, a first one. Um, but yeah, just thank you so much for your time. Uh, school board, you all just have kind of consent agenda to get through still and some kind of wrapping things. You're welcome to stay, of course, a public meeting, but you can also uh get home your families if that seems more appealing.
So thank you, very informative. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Very great time.
Okay, um, we'll move on to number five, which is our motion to approve the consent agenda.
But make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Uh, there any discussion on any of them? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's a genuine. Uh, go into bond oversight slides, binding the article.
No, that was actually asked in consent to for that.
No, I'm sorry.
We were actually. No discussion or actions, it was just closing.
Yep, okay. It's, it's, under the question items, but you don't have any at the time, action items, so, uh, closing.
There's a few upcoming dates, um, we have our parent conferences, which mentioned, Dan, great feedback on trying to. Give some data, do a little more collaborative with the community during those. Um, the six, seven, eight is OSBA's annual convention, um, I shared with you all that, um. I have found that valuable the past little while and attending that, if any of you see differently, I'd be happy to attend with you. Um, but OSBA has been going through some significant transition for the past couple of years and so. I, I don't want you to think the office is not available, but it's not something that I'll be, I'll be pushing for a while. Um, and then just a short reminder, um, our November board meeting is pushed to the seventeenth. Which I heard Jolynn say is when they're trying to schedule the planning commission meeting. I suggest, um, we'll just work around that somehow. Um, I'll figure out how to give representation of both, I don't want to delay that planning commission meeting any further. Um, our board meeting was changed, remember, because of the kind of awkwardness of the long weekend. Um, then boy, believe it or not, we have Paul Ray coming up, so uh, then we'll have another meeting made in December, so. That's all I have and I'll keep there leave before comments.
Good try. Uh, Will, if you want to start us off.
Um. Please to hear the progress of the goal today, I said I wanted to walk out here with a thumbs up that said, uh, I was pleased, I was glad, I was hope. Hoping that we would be pleased with the progress and clearly we are. And I appreciate all the work that's being done and thereby at every level of the staff and their teachers. Um, we have, I know we have ways to go, but it's, I appreciate the progress and then all the hard work. Um, I guess that's my main takeaway today, having heard the reports from the principals. And being pleased with how engaged they are and active they are and how focused they are and service, taking this seriously and. And that's been, I, that's been the case, been my observation for quite a while, but it's obviously still working. And it needs to still work and I'm excited about that, so I just uh express my appreciation to them again. As well as to the rest of the staff in the district.
Excellent.
Uh, second to Will's comments, I think, um, you know, seeing that there's a plan to move forward and we have a. A matrix on how to um actually figure out accountability and, and how we're doing. I think is wonderful, um, and it's refreshing. Um, I want to uh thank again the, the administration for coming in today and having discussions around. Student success and kind of what that means on kind of all levels, really appreciate that. Um, and I do appreciate, you know, like us setting high. Educational expectations and goals um above kind of what the state is. Um, trying to uh push us to, um. Yeah, and I really appreciate that, um, and I just want to say thank you to the uh city council for coming in. Really appreciate you guys coming in and having open dialogues and discussions about. Potential, I mean, I think, I think we're headed for some interesting times. Um, and I think, you know, we're going to have to work together to really kind of solve some of these problems, so. Um, I'm happy that, that we're getting that engagement, so. Um, other than that, I, I really appreciate everything and I thank all of you for being on the board every time, so I know it's not always easy.
Uh, well, I would like to wish everyone a happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. I think that's really important that we are. Uh affiliated with the tribes of the Grand Ron, I think it's really important that we, we acknowledge that and continue to expand our learning opportunities with the tribes. Um, and uh I would really like to say thank you to the city council for being here, I think. As, as I was listening to the dialogue and just the kind of the starting conversations, it just. Running anything, any kind of governance is so complicated and I think people don't quite understand all the nuance and all the intricacies. All the things that we have to just say, yeah, we cannot predict the future and yet we have to make decisions based on that, so. It just, it elevates the complexity and I think it's just great that we can start to build relationships and work together to support this community. Um, because overall, that's what our goal was, right? So, um, I agree with you, Dan, we are headed for some interesting changes in times, um, but I think. You know, I think working together and, and utilizing all the different uh intelligences in these communities. So I appreciate you folks for bringing this all together today. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen.
Well, I'll play on that. Yes, we are, um, entering into some interesting times. But you know what? Our community's going to do it because we're all going to work together. And that's what really helps make us strong. I appreciate the city council coming because I think that it's good for them to share. So that we'll know and we can share too and uh we'll just be stronger for it. I love it that we get our high school student over to tell us all about what's going on in, in the high school. And um, love our test scores, I love what we're doing. I, I just, with everybody pulling together, we're. Thanks for running pretty smoothly, I, from my perspective. Anyway, thank you, city council, family member, we sure appreciate you.
Thanks, buddy. Um, I just uh agree with a lot of comments that have been said here, uh, with our test scores that. The elementary school and what they're doing there and, and all three schools, the progress and engagement, ownership that. That our kids need, I think, go forward. Um, Leslie and I were, were able to attend a regional. Uh, OSBA where they gave us updates on some of the impacts of the federal government that, that was made. And uh, then, you know, Brian, you touched on it on the funding. And uh, if it's true that that has, I've seen funding really decimate some of our programs that we have in our, our community and our. Our schools, and so just be very mindful with that. And I know, Leslie, you took some training on public meeting law. And um, Brian and I was ended up talking with some people in front, and I guess that might be an online path for me. And so I'll reach out to them and see if anyone wants to click that training as well. Um, but everybody, I appreciate your time, uh, city council for joining us tonight and go ahead and return. Thanks, everybody.